I'd like to call and order the regular, excuse me, Gina, regular meeting of the Cordova Recreation and Park District for this Wednesday, April 17th, 2019, at 6:30 PM. Pledge of Allegiance?
Thank you Chair Yearwood. To lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening, I'd like to welcome to the podium Andrew Saltmarsh, who is the Clerical Two for the Planning Department. After we're done with the pledge, please remain standing for a moment of silence in honor of Minnie Connor, who was a cherished senior center member and long-term volunteer. After the conclusion of the moment of silence, we will hear more from Mr. Saltmarsh. Thank you.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
I'd like to introduce Laura Taylor, who's the Park Planning and Development Manager.
Hi. Thank you Chair Yearwood and members of the board for giving the opportunity to introduce Andrew Saltmarsh. He's our new Clerical Two. He's been with us for several months now. He's been a great help to myself, to Christina and John Biondo in the Park Planning Department, keeping our documents organized, and it's been something we've been needing for a long time. We're glad he's here. He comes to us with a degree in history from UC Santa Cruz. He has an experience and strong history of working, volunteering for the community in public library and agricultural community gardens. And he's also got past experience in doing trainings on OSHA safety equipment use. So he's got a lot of skills and we're putting them to use and we're really happy he's here. And so I'll just turn it over to him to make a few comments and we're done.
I'd like to say that, you know, I'm new to parks and I'm new to this district, but so far my experience has been both rewarding and fun. And I continue, I look forward to continuing working in the district and seeing how it shapes up in the next few years. Thank you.
All right, welcome Andrew. All right, roll call.
Director Riz?
Here.
Director Lineback?
Here.
Secretary Sloan?
Here.
Vice Chair Danzel?
Here.
And Chair Yearwood?
Here. All right, Board Disclosures on Action Items. Anyone have anything to disclose? Any action items?
Nope.
All right, seeing none, we'll move on to comments by the public.
Thank you Chair Yearwood. Members of the public may address the Board on district topics not listed on this agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. It is a violation of state law for the Board to discuss or take action on non-agenda items. Board members may only briefly ask clarifying questions or refer the matter to staff. At this time, I do have one speaker card for general public comment, so I'd like to welcome to the podium Jim Dodge, please.
Hi, I'm Jim Dodge. I've moved here in 1970 to Rancho. And I really didn't play golf until, for two or three times, until I retired. And then when I joined Sears, I had played 56 times in 2002. Ninety percent of that was at Cordova. I've also, I'm 83 years old. For the last 62 years, I have never missed a vote, primary or general, and I hope that the council will consider keeping the Cordova course open. I know we've had a rough four months, so to speak, haven't been able to play golf in the last 22 weeks, but did play Friday. It reminds me of the company I worked for for 30 years, Sears Roebuck and Company. Most of you remember them? They used to be a great company. They got into a profit kick in mid-'80s and look what happened to them now. Got to take care of the value of the course. It's a great value to the people. What we need is better equipment, lawn mowers that will pick up the grass. They did a great job this past year on the sand traps. That was one of my complaints for many years, but they did improve that. The golf carts need improving. You got to invest in the people and you got to invest in the equipment. Hopefully that will spark an interest throughout. It's probably the easiest course in the whole area to walk, and we need that. We've raised the taxes in Rancho to support a lot of the programs. I don't see why we would even consider closing a course like Cordova. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Dodge.
Does any member of the public wish to make comment on an item not on the agenda? That is this portion of the meeting. Please come forward.
Good evening. My name is Benny Demas. I'm a resident of Rancho Cordova. I moved here in 2009 as a new homeowner. I recently purchased in the older part of Rancho Cordova, which I've come to learn to appreciate on how the city's been so different. I myself, I would like to speak on the Cordova Golf Course. I'm a young man, growing up with my family here in Rancho Cordova and...
I'm sorry, I apologize, but that is for later on in the agenda. Do you have any general public comments? We can call you up at the golf course.
I will wait until then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any general public comments?
All right, we'll move on to the consent calendar.
Thank you Chair Yearwood. Consent calendar items are considered administratively routine and will be acted upon in one motion unless separate action on a specific item is necessary. The chairperson will consider any requests for discussion on the items prior to approval of the consent calendar. This evening, there are six items on the consent calendar for your consideration. Item C1 is to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the Board of Directors on March 20th, 2019. Item C2 is the district financial report for March 2019. Item C3 is to adopt Resolution 18/19-39 designated Francisco and Associates as the engineer of work and directing FAI to prepare the engineers' report for the park maintenance and recreation improvement for fiscal year 2019-20. Item C4 is to adopt Resolution 18/19-41 designated Francisco and Associates as the engineer of work and directing FAI to prepare the engineers' report for the Independence and Mather Landscaping and Lighting District for fiscal year 2019-20. Item C5 is to adopt Resolution 18/19-42 accepting the notice of completion for the Rosemont Community Park dugout project. And item C6 is to authorize the general manager to execute a two-year design print mail contract with print project managers between the amounts of $19,586.40 and not to exceed $25,201.20 per guide for the design, printing, and mailing of the biannual recreation guide.
Great. Does anybody wish to pull any items from the consent calendar? Discussion? Seeing none? Motion?
I'll move that we adopt, approve the consent calendar. C1, C2, C3, C4, C5, and C6, as written.
Motion by Director Reyes, a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Secretary Sloan. Roll call vote?
Director Riz?
Aye.
Director Lineback?
Aye.
Secretary Sloan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Danzel?
Aye.
And Chair Yearwood?
Aye. All right, moving on, there's no presentation, so committee reports?
Thank you. Item E1 is regarding the Standing Committee for Budget and Finance, which met on March 26th, and that is Director Lineback and Director Reyes.
Okay, Chair Yearwood, we had our Budget and Finance Standing Committee meeting on Tuesday, March 26th, and it was open. And we had three items that we had to discuss. One was the review of the fiscal year 2017 and '18 audited financial statements. The second, we had a discussion on the Cordova Golf Course. And the third was the budget plan for fiscal year 2019-2020. And we were able to work with staff, and I'm very pleased to see that the audit had come up nice and clean. No, there were no findings that were needed for Mr. Goodell to fix or work on. And so I want to thank staff for that because I think that's a really good, we're moving in the right direction there. In the Cordova Golf Course, my take, we did have public there, and I know that we had, I don't know, how many did we have? We had about 20 or...
We had 17 speakers?
Seventeen speakers, and they were able to express themselves, and so we listened to them. And I'll leave the budget plan with Director Lineback?
Yes, sure. And just to cover a couple of highlights of the comments, the primary things that I picked up on of the people present is that they were interested in more promotion against the carts, continued maintenance. There was a lot of compliments about the current state of maintenance at the golf course, and perhaps maybe thinking of some other revenue sources such as memberships. So I'll just move on from there. As far as the budget plan for 1920, we were given just a single sheet overview, but the budget will be balanced if it goes through as currently structured, and it will also result in an increase in the reserves, which we also got last year. So I think the district is moving in the right direction in terms of getting the reserves where they need to be. And that is my report.
All right. Everybody good in that regard? All right, we will move on. No public hearing items tonight, so we'll move on to G, regular calendar.
Thank you Chair Yearwood. We have had several requests to change the agenda item order, so we would like to ask that item G3 be moved up to first on the regular calendar.
Okay, no concerns with that, so I concur. All right.
Thank you. Item G3 is to provide staff direction on the future operations and financial sustainability of the Cordova Golf Course. And I'll turn it over to General Manager Patrick Larkin.
Thank you Clerk Goodell, or Clerk Goodell, sorry, Clerk Jones. So Matt is going to walk us through the visual of my presentation this evening. And then after my presentation, there'll be an opportunity for the public to comment about their points of view related to the golf course topic this evening. So the golf course, Cordova Golf Course was purchased in March 1973 for $290,000. Two adjacent parcels were purchased on August 31st, 2005, which is considered the Old McDonald Farm, and on February 28th, 2006, which is the 9405 Jackson Highway property. The district paid $1,375,000 for the Old McDonald Farm and $850,000 respectively for the 9405 Jackson Highway property. Revenue has declined and mirroring expenditures has created deferred maintenance and equipment needs. There is no replacement plan or reserves dedicated to the golf course fund. District staff has determined that major investment, financial, and staff resources is needed to upgrade the Cordova Golf Course to meet current health, safety, and access requirements. Staff is concerned it will not generate a return on the investment. In the last 10 years, the district has recognized an average annual loss of $101,433, with the general fund subsidizing that impact. Through March 31st, 2019, the golf course has received $416,000 in revenue. Based on previous years, last quarter, the rejection is for an additional $200,000 for a total of $616,000 by year end. Staff projections set revenue at $720,000 based on the last three years of performance. To provide the necessary resources, staffing and immediate needs, a minimum of $1 million should be budgeted for the operating expenses with a potential amount of $1,446,447, that includes equipment upgrades that are needed. A subsidy will be required to fill that gap. An ongoing annual general fund subsidy is needed to continue to keep the golf course open at a standard that does not address the infrastructure replacement that we need to do. If the Board chooses to keep the golf course operational, then a long-term commitment for an estimated $11 million investment in life cycle replacements for the course needs to be made. There will be other replacements needed at the golf course beyond the $11 million that have not yet been detailed, such as the drainage modifications to reduce the closure days that we're currently seeing. The 73.2-acre golf course property is zoned recreational. There are no comparable sales available to determine the market value. In comparison, the non-golf properties are zoned light industrial, and that's the Old McDonald Farm and the 9405 Jackson Highway property. The nearby sales were provided by Sacramento County Parcel Viewer map. One sold for $111,111 per acre, and the other sold for $168,111 per acre. Based on these comparisons and applying the math to our 6.8 acres, it translates to a range of $755,000 to $1,150,000. This does not include the cost in preparing the land for sale, if that is the decision that goes forward. So at this point, I'm going to go through some of the options we would like for the Board to consider. Option number one is invest Measure J, My Parks, PRMID, and general fund monies to address immediate critical needs of the golf course, including staffing, golf carts, and maintenance equipment. Some of the pros of this decision are course continues to operate. There's a commitment to a long-term sustainable funding of the golf course projects that are identified. Maintain visual open space, maintain land asset. We preserve the Quimby 4.8 acres per 1,000 population and creates a positive experience and a place to play and encourages a healthy community and active activity for all ages. Some of the cons of this are immense resources to address financial and staffing crisis, the public scrutiny for using public funds for a special interest activity, other services reduced or cut to support the needs of the golf course, difficulties in raising golf fees as a method of cost recovery, reallocating, reprioritizing the CIP plans that have been identified. The investment in golf carts and infrastructure does not guarantee an increase in golfers due to the state of the golf industry and strong competition in the local market. Not guaranteed on an expected return of investment and may take several years to realize true return on that investment. Potential long-term subsidized activity and operations could negatively impact public perceptions of trust. Sacramento County development growth will require Jackson Highway widening and will reduce the size of the driving range and parking lot. Not a quick fix, not enough evidence of the golfing industry is trending positively, and the market is competitively saturated with 44 courses within a 30-minute radius. Some of the fiscal impact is the general fund or PRMID, My Parks Fund, will subsidize the golf course $726,000 in year one and an ongoing annual subsidy. Continuing the operations will create a need to find an allocation of $11 million in capital expenditures and additional funding for ongoing operational needs. Financially, the cost outweighs the potential investment returns. As a result of this decision, if the Board chooses option one, the golf course needs to be closed temporarily to recruit staff resources, obtain needed equipment, and perform high priority upgrades to operate. Option number two, sell the two non-golf properties, Old McDonald Farm and 9405 Jackson Road property. The reinvestment into the golf course to address critical immediate needs, including staffing, golf cart leases, and maintenance of, maintenance equipment. Some of the pros of this option are, as we're investing, the sale proceeds estimated between $755,000 and $1,150,000 based on two nearby comparable sales in the real estate transactions. Investing sale proceeds in the golf course may reimburse the general fund or PRMID, My Parks, fund going forward. Course continues to operate. There's a commitment to short-term funding projects and equipment. Maintain visual open space, maintain land asset, preserves positive experience and places to play, and encourages a healthy community activity for all ages. Some of the cons of this particular option is the investment in golf carts and infrastructure does not guarantee an increase in golfers due to the state of the golf industry and strong competition. Short-term use of funds, not sustainable long-term. Reduction of property assets, loss of current rental revenue of $24,000 annually for the rental of the 9405 Jackson Highway property, and no guarantee in an expected return on investment and may make several, may take several years to realize the true return on investment. The general fund will have to support the golf course until the sale of those properties. No timetables are available for actual sales. Sacramento County development growth will require Jackson Highway widening and will reduce the size of the driving range and, and the parking lot. Some fiscal impacts, the general fund and PRMID, My Parks Fund, will be needed to cover costs until proceeds are received from the sale. The proceeds from the sale of the assets will subsidize operations and immediate projects for an estimated three years. Continuing the operation will create a need to find and allocate $11 million in capital expenditures and additional funding for ongoing operational needs. Financially, the costs outweigh the potential investment returns. Results, if the Board chooses option two, the golf course needs to be closed temporarily to recruit staff, resources, obtain needed equipment, and perform high priority upgrades to operate. Moving on to option number three, the golf course operations, close the golf course operations and sell all parcels with proceeds of sales reinvested into the district. The pros of this option are allows the district resources to focus on providing sustainable core services. The proceeds could be reinvested into the district-wide resources to better serve a broader constituency. Removes the need for major investments in infrastructure and deferred maintenance. Allows more capacity to follow the Board's general fund reserve policy. Current market rate for real estate is high. The golf course management agreement ends June 30th, 2019. The restaurant concessionaire's agreement will be reviewed in June 2019. Portion of the sales could be reinvested into local community to upgrade current service levels. Reduction of liability, potential safety issues due to deferred maintenance. Some cons of this option is land authorities could choose to reduce Quimby Park land dedication to four acres per thousand. Less owned property and land assets for the district. CRPD will no longer be providing a golfing recreational activity and potential layoffs of part-time and full-time staff. Fiscal impact, the proceed of the sale will be reinvested into the general fund and may increase service levels and be reserved for future projects to best serve the residents. The district will have some costs for minimal interim maintenance and security of the golf course site. Closing the facility will forego revenue and expenses. The results of this action, if the Board chooses option three, the golf course will permanently close on July 1st, 2019. The district staff will then work with a real estate professional to sell the properties. And so that concludes my report. And with that, we're going to open it up for public comment, and Danielle Jones will facilitate that.
I will call each person one by one to the podium. As a reminder, each speaker has a limit of three minutes, and I do apologize in advance if I misspell or misspeak your name. I'd like to call Patricia Quinn to the podium, please.
Good evening. Thank you for hearing me. Prior to March, it's my understanding that there was not much in the way of outreach to the stakeholders of the golf course. The golfers, the employees, the volunteers, the onsite concessionaire, the community in general. Even, even the golf course manager was somewhat blindsided, I think, by the potential to close the golf course this soon. I don't think the Board and the district has been very transparent on the issue. The, the presentation about the financial picture of the golf course seems to paint a picture that it's somewhat dire financial straits at this time. And that there's an immediate need for an investment of approximately $1.5 million for repairs, equipment, but that also includes the operational costs for the coming year, which is largely going to be covered by revenue. I think maybe the essential list that I saw when reviewing the minutes from the last meeting might be a little bit overstated. But reading between the lines, it really appears that the Board favors an alternative to sell the property and, and use the cash for some of the more favored programs in the district. But the course has, in the last three years, has pretty much offered, operated, I'm sorry, fairly close to break even. And over the years, over many, many years, there has been very little reinvestment of any profits that there were for years and years back into the golf course, which meant that it declined. The equipment needs to be upgraded once in a while. The course needs improvements. That all takes money. That all takes money. I mean, lastly, and most importantly, that the course conditions at Cordova right now are, are adequate. I was out there today. It was a great experience. Many of the customers are seniors, many others are families with youngsters that can comfortably bring new golfers out for an enjoyable experience while they're learning. A few of the high school teams use the course for practice. I feel that to close the course and take away that recreational opportunity that it provides would, would be a big mistake and detrimental to all of those that have utilized the course over the years. I feel that the district has a duty to consider recreational activities for all age groups, and the Cordova course offers a, a very friendly environment for all the golfers, especially for the young and the senior golfers that are not able to utilize some of the bigger courses that are plentiful in the area. The Cordova course is not glamorous, but its users are not looking for features that, that the larger and better funded courses may provide.
I'm sorry, Ms. Quinn, can you make your final statement? Your time has elapsed.
Yes. I vote no. On closure, I hope that you would choose option two. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to call Walt Myers to the podium, please.
My name is Walt Myers. I live in Rancho Cordova for a long time. I first saw Cordova Camellia Golf Course in 1973, when it was part of a demonstration by Councilman Toby Johnson and Arrow Jet trying to influence our company to move a manufacturing plant to Rancho Cordova. Lodi and West SAC were also in contention. It was a definite selling point with the parks and the bike trail, and it was successful. We came to Rancho and stayed for quite a while. I played sporadically in, at Cordova until 1992, when I retired. I played two to three times a week with a group, and we figure our group has played around at least 3,000 rounds so far since 1992, and we will, God love us, continue to do so. I have criticized and complimented the course many times. You probably remember. We feel that if the course is closed for the financial reasons, it would be wrong. It paid the way for the district for many years, and I, I know that for a fact, and could be self-supporting if staff, excuse me, if staff support were given and the revenue replaced to the course. It used to be in a fund by itself, but it has slid into the general fund now. Make changes in management or administration as you need. Ask the city for enhancement funds like the school district has. Sell the excess property, but don't shut it down like the pools and gun range. It's an integral part of the district and will make you proud again. Closing temporarily would, would in fact kill the course. I, I have been around where courses closed temporarily and it never reopened. I, I don't think your staff report of the dollars that you say that would have to be expended immediately, I don't think all of that equipment needs to be replaced immediately. It could be done over a period. Reconsider your closure. I, I, like a lot of us, I vote in a lot of elections. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to call Jerry Ann Campbell to the podium, please.
Good evening, and I'm very happy to be here, but I'm not happy with the subject. I wanted to say a little something about the Brown Act law. The Brown Act was an act of California State Legislature passed in 1953, which guaranteed the public a right to attend, participate, and discuss in meetings of local legislative bodies. This was enacted in response to mounting concerns over secret meetings held by local elected fishes, officials to avoid public scrutiny. The Brown Act protects the rights of citizens to participate in open meetings at local levels and county levels. This subject of the Cordova Golf Course being closed is big news. I heard about it about two days ago, and it, I've lived in this area for 40 years. I came here was a, as a brand-new BSN nurse with no money, and since earned my living and retired here and been able to have recreational money, raise a son, and I think the idea of closing this golf course is not a good idea at all. I followed through with El Dorado Hills Golf Course being closed. It's been a disaster for the whole west slope of El Dorado County. It's just nothing but weeds now, and it was very much like this golf course in that it was a community golf course. So please, don't close this golf course. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to call to the podium Sarah Brechtill.
I'm Sarah Breckbill. I'm a member of the Cordova Women's Golf Club, which has been in existence since 1975, and I've been a member since 1989, and I've played at Cordova since 1978. First, I would like to ask the board members, how many emails did you get from the general public about the closing of the course? And did you actually read any of them? And how many did you get for, in favor of closing the course? We would like to know those answers. We would like to see revenue and expenses for each year starting in 1984. What did you do with the profits from the course? It was quite evident that they were not invested in the course. Two parcels adjacent to the golf course were purchased for a total of $2,225,000, and you might be able to sell them for 755,000 to 1,150,000, which is a loss of $1,075,000. Where did the money come from to purchase those two parcels that you did nothing with? Now for the options on the golf course. Option one, invest monies, and we've all heard what you said, the key to that option is closure of the course temporarily. Option number two, sell two non-golf parcels and invest in the course. Again, the key to that is temporary closure of the course. And option three is close the course effective July 1. If I were a board member and able to vote and wanted the course closed, I would not vote for option three. I would vote for option two. The course closed temporarily, the big question is, what is temporary? If you plan to close the course temporarily, July 1, you would miss some prime time for players and making money. The writing is on the wall. Once the course is closed, you know it will never open again. So if you vote to temporarily close the course on option one or two, we, the general public, want to know what that temporary timeframe is. We want transparency as is part of your mission statement. Thank you for your time.
Next, I'd like to welcome to the podium Teri Dugan.
Good evening, friends. I have been a resident of the Rosemont Community for over 40 years. As you know, Cordova Golf Course is part of our service area, and I would point out that the west end of the district is one of the most underserved areas as far as levels of open space is concerned. We've had this conversation any number of times. We're fairly landlocked, there's not a lot of options. I want to expand, I don't want to get into the, the weeds here as far as some of the details, but I certainly, as I read through this, challenged a lot of the, the data and the number, but let me characterize the staff report, and please, I'm not trying to criticize the district or anybody with the district, but those were the most simplistic three options that could be presented, very basic. There is nothing in this report that suggests that there was any creativity or looking beyond the very small box designed by those three options in terms of what might be done to creatively not just keep the course open, but actually improve it and make the bottom line much better. You may or may not be aware that in the next few, couple decades, there are five major development proposals right along Jackson Highway south of Mather that will combine population of somewhere around 50,000 people, perhaps more. They will not have that bit of open space, they will not have that resource to turn to. Have you had any conversations with any of those developers? It's Stonebridge, Tykert, Granite are the three major ones for the West Jackson Highway project, and you should know of the one south of Mather, further to the east. They need to be consulted, has been indicated here. We have not had enough public comment, public hearing. Apparently, there was a little bit of conversation with your finance council, tonight was the first I heard of it. Rosemont Community had our meeting last Thursday night. We learned about it the following day. We are not happy about not being included in this conversation because this is part of the community. It needs to be more creatively explored, how the district can improve upon it, expand it, do something. We've had a lot of effort out of the greater Sacramento area supporting sports, and they've gone to extremes. I'm not trying to compare the levels between downtown and out here, but they were certainly far more creative than I've seen in the staff report here. We can do better. Once that asset is gone, if you were to sell it, it's gone. It's one-time money, and from your staff report, it seems like that money will be blown through within a year or two. You'll have nothing to fall back on. So, you know, please, let's have a conversation. Rosemont, and I'm sure all others here in the district want to explore this and come up with a better option than what has been presented. We can all do better.
I'm sorry, your time has expired.
Thank you.
I'd like to welcome to the podium John Duffy, please.
I am John Duffy, and it was St. Patrick who invited me to wear this hat tonight. I'd first like to thank Danielle Jones of your staff for her prompt response to my email request for documents outlining staff recommendations in this matter. As I read the material she provided, two points of interest caught my attention, both listed under option one, though I believe they also apply to options two and three. First, under the pro comments, Cordova Golf Course encourages a community healthy activity for all ages, and under the con section, public scrutiny of using public funds for special interest activity, that's golf. In today's environment of near-instant communication, such scrutiny is both unavoidable and should be embraced. Let me illustrate the importance of these two statements with my own journey to Cordova Golf Course. About 12 years ago, I realized I would not be able to keep playing racquetball three days a week, and so I began a search for another replacement activity. That search led to golf, which in turn led me to an organization called SIR, Sons in Retirement. In particular, Branch 150. The core tenet of SIR is to provide meaningful community connection and support for retired men. I joined Branch 150 some 10 years ago and have now been playing golf at Cordova every Friday morning, weather, health, and travel plans permitting, for over 10 years alongside 12 to 24 other branch golfers. We are not a special interest group of golfers. Rather, we're a group of retirees enjoying that community healthy activity. While many of us do make use of the power cart option, lots of us, myself included, walk the course because it is walkable. Our oldest golfer is now 94, and he's a regular on Friday mornings. This is not the country club set of elite golfers. I have a 30 handicap at Cordova. Rather, Cordova does support that wide range of ages and abilities in an outdoor setting. While it may be, excuse me, difficult to quantify the benefits to the community of keeping Cordova open, just imagine increased community engagement of senior citizens, leading to lower health costs, lower levels of depression, and higher states of happiness in your senior citizens. Thank you for this opportunity to comment. Oh, and by the way, I'm still playing racquetball three days a week, so I'd like to keep that golf option open for as long as possible. Thank you.
I'd like to call Ted Patterson to the podium, please.
As you heard, my name is Ted Patterson. I'm retired military, came here in 1974. That's when that course got my attention, and it's had it ever since. I've raised myself, my kids, and my grandkids at Cordova Golf Course. It's a unique facility. There isn't any other like it around here. You can roll the ball on the green. Amateurs, basics, beginners can learn there. People that call themselves golfers, and Jim can attest to some of them, can have their date there, too. There's enough par threes and everything to give you a good round of golf, and, as has been alluded to, it's a course you can walk if you so desire. It not only promotes harmony, it gives us all the, the opportunity for exercise and keep us healthy. I'm 81 now. Every time my grandkids come here, we play there. Every time. They love it. I also just found out about this a few days ago. You've got an, an email from me someplace in the mill. I hope you take the time to read it because it's more explicit that I can be here. The, the time, the timing of this, I think you all knew what you were doing, to tell you the truth. You know, we haven't had enough time to get to all the people that play here, that all the people that enjoy the golf course, the support it has for the, the community, and I, like some others, don't think that your options are as precise and accurate as they could be, given the time and devotion that some of us would give to it if it were our project. I would hope that you all think on not closing. I haven't seen a golf course that closed reopen. I, I can't think of one. If you can, please inform me, and I'll go, I'll, I'll Google it and make sure. Okay? Because all of them around here that have gone down are down. Closing Cordova for a short while would mean it would close forever. And maintenance is a thing that has stretched over a period of time. You don't have to replace all those golf carts. 60% of the people out there walk anyway, but you do need to maintain them, and you can, you can replace them, helter-skelter, or however you want to refer to it. The monies that the golf course has earned over these years, 1974, I The monies that the golf course has earned over these years, 1974 I got here, just hasn't been put back in it. There have been improvements, and those of us that play there have seen them. And the staff there has cut us in on all those biddies that we derive by being at Cordova Golf Course. And I play on all the rest of them around here, too, but I go back to Cordova because that's my home course. Thank you very much for speaking.[625.66][625.66][applause]
Next, I'd like to call, is it Allison Paquette? Austin Paquette?
Good evening. My name is Allison Paquette, and I've lived here in Rancho Cordova for the last 25 or so years. Recently purchased a home over in Oxford backs up to the golf course. I've played golf a few times. I would not say I'm a golfer. I'm a better beer wench than a golfer. You can tell that by my scores.[664.69][664.69][laughter] But I do appreciate the golf course very much. And when I found out that this meeting was going to be held tonight, I was first very dismayed, but then I realized it's Rancho Cordova, it's Cordova Parks and Rec. I was very excited about that because you guys have done a great job. Rancho Cordova's got a lot of good things going on. Parks and Rec's got it going on. The golf course, I think, could use a little more attention in the way it's marketed and the way it is promoted. And I think that the options that have been presented, as have been spoken much more eloquently than I can do, could be explored a little more thoroughly. I don't know what the limitations are as far as Park and Rec District in terms of getting investors. I have a number of people I know that have a lot of discretionary income that could look for a tax write-off. Maybe that's something we could look at. I don't know. I would like to see if there's a way we could approach this as a community and find other options to explore, to possibly continue keeping the golf course open. And the temporary closure, I think, is a little challenging. I work for Sutter Health, and when we have to do upgrades to our hospitals, we never close them. They're needed. It's a necessary community resource. I believe the golf course accounts the same way. And we could find a way to make those improvements that are needed without actually closing the course.
Do you even know where?
Exactly. That's part of it. The July closure date is a little worrisome to me. That's a high-income-revenue stream time, and I think we could work around that. So again, thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to speak here tonight, and I hope that we will hear more and have a chance to be heard again. Thank you.[765.23][765.23][applause]
I'd like to call to the podium Ed Spelassie.
That was pretty close. It's Ed Spelassie, but gave it a good try. I've been playing at Cordova Golf Course ever since taking lessons from the great pro Jim Marta in the early 90s.[802.00][802.00][applause] Great pro and a great teacher if he taught me how to play golf. I've played golf at many places, near and far, but Cordova is my home course and my favorite course by far. Your mission as a district is to encourage recreation. You have that in abundance at Cordova Golf Course. Recreation, people of all ages and all skill levels enjoying healthy exercise, socialization, and challenging golf at this friendly, walkable, reasonably-priced golf course. Isn't that what CRPD is all about? To provide enjoyable and healthy recreation for the district. Cordova Golf Course is a venerable and vital asset of this district. With enthusiastic marketing and promotion and a moderate improvement in infrastructure, this valuable yet underestimated recreational property could increase volume of play significantly and probably show a positive bottom line. If you close this course, what's left locally for the division's golfing community? Mather, Wildhawk, and Ansel Hoffman are all much longer, much more expensive, and not easily walkable. Bradshaw Ranch is a nice little course, but it only offers nine holes. The only 18-hole courses that I would compare favorably to Cordova are Emerald Lakes and Elk Grove and Davis Municipal in Davis, both a very long round trip from our district, and both, I might add, very successful. It is decision time. My vote: Keep Cordova Golf Course open, improve it, promote it, and make it financially viable.
Can I have Dennis Davis to the podium, please?
Good evening. My name is Dennis, and I have been playing at Cordova for 14 years, I would say. I was playing there three days a week. I'm retired military. Jim asked me to take over, excuse me, I misspoke there. I was asked to become a marshal, and then later I was asked to take over the marshaling staff by Jim. Following that, I took over bits and pieces of volunteer staff, first tee program, beautification projects and stuff, to improve the course. So what I'm sharing with you, the reason I give you that background, is I'm not just a person that casually walks through there. I have spent a lot of time on that course, and I have watched what has occurred. Some number of years ago, the district started raising green fees, cart fees, and I began to worry because every time that we bump up a couple of bucks, faces would disappear. And that course is built around seniors and kids, and we're losing them. And I went to district staff, I didn't come up here, they were down there, and I said, "Do you know what you're doing?" I said, "I'm here enough that I can see people every time you do that." It's like one of these photographs where you see faces fade away. And you're reducing the use of the course through elevated fees, and it was never that way. It was a family course. Well, I got no satisfactory response, but simultaneously, another thing occurred. We started getting a lot of golf discount sites, Golf Now, Birdy Bug, Golf Moose. There must be 40 or 50 of them out there. My point is that Cordova has not been allowed to even reduce its rates, to my knowledge, for anybody, and right now, I can play every course in Sacramento cheaper than you can play Cordova, okay, by using those sites. I think it's $26 to play Mather, $27 Ansel Hoffman, and the list goes on. I've got, I pulled it all off the computer, and I have an itemized list in my wallet. Here's my point, though. I've watched the funding dwindle at the course, and Cordova does not have a maintenance problem. It does not have a personnel problem. It has a fiscal problem. The district, in my opinion, quit supporting this district, the course some five or more years ago. You know, we lost our mechanic. We didn't replace him. Well, along with that, there's fewer carts operating, okay? I go to the course superintendent, who I worked with on a number of different tasks, and they don't have the funding for the chemicals. Right now, they're mowing the greens, three days a week only. And for those of you that golf, you understand that that has an impact on the players. I think the course can be brought back and redeemed. I think that we need some support from this district. I think the attitudes in this district are counter to retaining the course. We saw that with the pros and cons.
Sir, I'm sorry, your time has expired.
I have a hearing problem, so I'm not sure who said that.
Me up here.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Sorry. Make your final comments, if you would, please. Your time's expired.
Okay. I'm going to ask you to come up with a new option. Let's keep the course. Let's invest in our community. Let's invest in kids. Let's invest in seniors, and let's quit listening to proposals that were created. Was this a case of mismanagement, or is there a hidden agenda that has occurred here? Because I've been on the ground there, and I've seen the impact of all the cuts over many years. And what we have today is what was created, whether it was one way or the other.
Sir, I'm sorry.
I'll sit down now.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.[1204.71][1204.71][applause]
I'd like to call Sung Oh Hong to the podium, please. Sung Oh Hong?
Yes. I'm not prepared, no.
Okay.
I just, I'll tell you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I have to come to this hearing because I like Cordova Golf Course. I am a retired US Army, also Korean Army, but I'm a, every time a weekday, I play a golf course. And then my kid asks me, "Why are you so happy?" I go, "Play golf." I go, "I'm at Cordova Golf Course." Yeah. Sometime I go into the, especially I invited a friend of mine or my kid. Sometime I go in Mather and Ansel Hoffman also. But I like a, I go to Cordova Golf Course nearby, inside my town. That's what I like it. It's a, I want to be a park district. You can make money all the park. Some parks, you make good money. Some parks, you lose money because still they operate the park. It's a means like a human being happy. So, over here, a lot, 90% of our entire people here, I saw that the Cordova course not, might look like my grandkid, elementary school, or junior high, high school, weekday, they come in training there. They are teaching, very happy they're teaching them. Or a young golfer, person, next time they go PGA or LPGA possibility. So, I love to know, please don't cross. It's like a money. It's a money change that's make you happy. So, I know Cordova City or County financially have a problem, I know, but it's a human being doesn't make a money change. You pay your money, human being happier you can buy. Please keep on going to the open. So, many people waiting for, don't make a set to the people. Please. Thank you.[1430.33][1430.33][applause]
I'd like to call to the podium Sung Won.
Thank you. I can congratulate you on the job you've done in making Cordova a sports center. Congratulations on the adventure. I've played golf for over 60 years. I've played at Cordova when it was Camellia. I live in the area, and I'm here to speak as a longtime patron of Cordova Golf Course and the driving range. This course is unique in that it provides a scaled-down course that is conducive to senior and junior play, as well as providing an opportunity for all skill-level players to practice and refine their game. It also serves as a training facility to more than one high school. At 4,600 yards, the 18-hole course is shorter than a championship nine-hole course. It is walkable by most, from seniors to juniors. For those whom time is a problem, it provides an 18-hole experience in relatively little time, not to mention a quick nine-hole capability. The course could be a showplace for the city of Rancho Cordova, a city of Rancho Cordova Senior Championship, and a city junior championship could be held every year. A Rancho Cordova City High School Team Championship Tournament could be developed that would add to the Rancho Cordova's stature as a sports city. To do this, it would have to offer competitive services and product. That requires support and investment. It is my belief that the driving range could be a true moneymaker. Improvements such as shaded hitting stalls with misters and more, and easier to read yard markers and downrange lights would serve to make the practice experience much more comfortable and productive, therefore draw more patrons. An additional low-cost moneymaking amenity, a hot dog beverage cart could be wheeled into place behind the range and at the 10th tee during business hours. Said cart would be stored in the cart barn when the course is closed. This gives an opportunity for patrons at the range to get a quick snack, money spent. A player development program that features an upfront three-to-six-month fee to provide a member with unlimited range balls and discounted green fees, as well as a free group technique clinic once a month, would provide a base income for the range. Weekly drawings for range balls and green fees would also entice more patients to partake. What I'm talking about is promotion. This course is not promoted, and it needs to be. It's a jewel.[1651.48][1651.48][applause]
Sir, sir, your time has expired.
No, it's not. I've got six seconds. There are a number of low-cost, minor improvements that could be made to the course. I would suggest that a team of volunteers could be formed to enable such improvements.
Sir.
I would volunteer to head such a team. In closing, I would implore you not to turn your backs on the many seniors, juniors, and the public in general that this course serves so well.[1682.61][1682.61][applause]
Yong Su Jong.
Yeah, my opinion is the same as him.
Hello. My name is Tom Peterson. I've been a resident of Rosemont and the Cordova Recreation and Park District for 45 years. I want to ask each of you individually to think of a place, a special place that you have that makes you happy, brings a smile to your face, brings you joy. Maybe you visited first in childhood, or you go there with your family. That place for me is Cordova Golf Course. Now, in the next month, I'm going to have a brand-new grandson, and I want to take a picture of each of your faces in my mind, so that in five years from now, when I take my grandson to the driving range and the putting, in the putting surface for the first time, I can give a prayer of Thanksgiving and mention you each individually as helping save this place for future generations. Now, just a few days ago, we all watched in horror as Notre Dame in Paris was burning. But the firewomen and the firemen saved that place. Now, we watched, and Now, we, we watched and most of us had never worshipped there or even visited there, but we felt for the people who did. And it was a worldwide iconic place. Cordova is local. It's a special place. It's personal for us. You are the fire women and firemen that can save it. Please do so. Thank you.
Can I have the gentleman returned to the podium who came at the beginning, please? Thank you.
Again, to introduce myself, my name is Benny Demus. As a resident of Rancho Cordova here, I can honestly say I've been playing golf at Cordova Golf Course for about ten to twelve years. And I've gotten better because the course has allowed me the room and the space and the availability to be able to get better. If I had to go and pay fifty dollars at another golf course every time to get better, I probably wouldn't be able to afford to play golf. One of the things that I know I've done is I've brought my children with me to play golf there. And nobody pushes us along and nobody's worried about how long my son's going to take because he's got an eight putt into the hole. The idea is I really appreciate having a golf course that I can call a part of my community. My, this community has grown since I've been here in two thousand nine and even before that. We have hundreds, if not thousands, of residents growing into this community. And it is not being used as a resource in the expansion and the promotion of Cordova Golf. One of the things that we need to understand is our community has grown so much that we have future generations who do not want to lose out on opportunities that we currently own. As we give up these properties and these managements for the fiscal necessity, we're losing what could potentially exist for the city to grow in all of these other areas, as was mentioned previously. We have other communities and other houses being built. And again, we can go and spend our money at Mather Golf Course for a higher price, for more time. But Cordova allows us to have that time back to ourselves. I could honestly play golf there in about three to three and a half hours and still be home with my family for dinner. As a teacher, I live my life what's called semi-retirement. Two days a week on the golf course when I have vacations. And my wife knows it and she lets me go and I love it. But that's my happy place as all of these other people have presented before them. This is my happy place and I would like to be a part of it. And if and when the day comes I do retire, like all of these gentlemen and ladies behind me, I still want to play golf at Cordova. Thank you very much.
I do have some speaker cards that I've requested to go in a certain order. So before we get to those, I'd like to ask at this time for any further speaker cards to be brought forward on this item. You can approach the podium, please. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Joanne Hanson. I've been, I was born and raised in Rancho Cordova since nineteen seventy. I just wanted to, as you guys consider this vote that I don't know how, how imminent, how important this, this state is to make this decision right away, is do not narrowly think that golf is a special interest for seniors. I think the golf industry thought that many years back when Tiger Woods came into the golf game and Nike and other young golfers and athletes came into the game and it brought life back to the golf game and it's still there. So where they invested in golf, I think if you guys take the opportunity and invest in the market in this golf course, it can bring back profits and profits that you guys saw for many, many years and did not reinvest back into the golf course. So I just ask that you do not narrowly think that this is just a golfer special interest seniors, that there's a lot of activity and interest in it for ages and right now is a great time to bring it back to life. Thank you.
I'd like to call to the podium Larnell Gill.
Good evening, my name is Larnell Gill. I've been a resident of Rosemont since nineteen seventy-eight. And I started playing golf at Rancho Cordova Golf Course probably in nineteen eighty-one. So it's been a staple in my life as well. And as some of you may know or may not know, but the Rosemont Director used to work at that Cordova Golf Course and we had a great relationship for the Board of Directors. So for us to get that golf course closed down without any input from the Neighborhood Association, I felt like that was, uh, been disrespectful to the community. So if you could notify us a little bit more about what's going on and the things that are happening with what we consider our golf course, Rosemont Association would really appreciate that. And my vote is that we don't close down the golf course. And closing the golf course, like everyone has said, it's not going to reopen. That's a family outing. My kids, my grandkids learn golf there. Thank you.
Ron Brandon, please.
Good evening. I'm not going to be one that says I've been here for twenty-five years, thirty years, like everybody else. I came here about five years ago to Rancho Cordova, right? My wife and I moved up along with my son. We're out in Hafa Anatolia. But I got to say, this course is great. I've golfed it numerous times. But unless you drive by it, you have no idea it's there. It's not promoted, like other people have said. We have a growing aging population. In the next two years, Sacramento is supposed to increase twenty-one percent of people over sixty-five years old. I'm not in that category yet, but it probably will be soon. But this course is not promoted at all. And again, if you, if you don't drive by it, you don't know it. I, I live over in the area. Nobody knows about the course. When I ask, I'm going to go attend the meeting for the Cordova, Rancho Cordova, they're asking, where's that course at? I got neighbors that don't even know it and they live in Rancho Cordova. The only way I knew about it, again, was driving by. But when I came up here, I rented a house in Rosemont. Rosemont community is well aware of that course, but it, it's not expanded. There's, there's no flyers, there's nothing being promoted about this course. And I think there's a lot of interest in this course. I think there could be a lot of ideas that can increase revenue, a lot of ideas. So you know, you heard numerous ones here. I think closing the course is a bad idea. And I think if you involve the community to come up with different ways to increase revenue, you're probably going to get a hundred different ideas. And will they work? Maybe, maybe not, but at least they're ideas. And instead of closing the course, like they said, it's a one-time revenue that'll be blown through in a couple of years. I think Rancho Cordova is a great city. I'm happy that I've made this my home. I'm glad I brought my family up here. I would hate to see this course closed. Please keep it open. Thank you.
I apologize, is it David Arroyo?
Hello, my name's David Arroyo. I'm the president of Latino Junior Golf Association. My kids grew up in it. It's been about thirteen years in that program. It did nothing but help my daughter go through school, help my son go through school. My daughter got scholarships. My nieces got scholarships. Talking to Jim this winter about bringing a chapter to there where we bring twenty-five kids. We teach them how to golf. We charge them seventy bucks for the year. It's just, if you put a golf club in a kid's hand, they just love it. You're going to be missing a lot of opportunity to watch these young people grow. I've been in this program for twelve years with my kids. Not one kid that's been through this program, never seen them on drugs, never seen them in jail. They still come back and help. They're our helpers. It's the way to grow the game, you know? You got to start off with the youth. They get older, they bring their kids in. I mean, we got, uh, um, you know, my kids are volunteers. And you just got to keep it open because there's just no, um, I mean, where's the kids going to go now? You know? I always have parents come talk to me about, you know, this is so good. We have the tournament there every year. For the last two years, we got twenty-six, thirty golfers, young golfers playing nine holes. We have burgers, we have everything there. And it's just a great experience for the kids. I know a lot of these people, you know, go there and golf, but I'm talking about for the youth, uh, you can't beat it. There's a lot more worse things they could be doing. And, and you say, yeah, there's forty-four golf courses within thirty minutes. Jump, uh, go to one of those golf courses and see the difference for paying thirty-one, thirty-two dollars. You jump in their carts, then they're not running low. You know, if you just spend money in the golf course, it'll, it'll pay you back. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to call Bill Blunt to the podium, please.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm a former eight-plus year employee volunteer at the golf course. Resigned a few weeks ago. I, in our last meeting that Chairman Reyes chaired for the Financial Committee, I gave you, I gave the board some reports on our surveys, our reports on our, our cart crisis situation we did back in seven, twenty seventeen. I'd like to know if you got those and if you didn't, how come you didn't get those? We've heard a couple of times forty-four golf courses and I can research that just as well as anybody can on the internet. And if you do forty-four golf courses around Sacramento area, they're within forty-five minutes, not thirty minutes. Five of those have been closed, one for at least ten years, Forest Lake that's on the list. One of them is a country club and that's not a public place to play golf. Twelve of them are forty-five to minutes to an hour away. Seven of them are an hour to an hour and a half away. So that boils down to about fourteen to sixteen golf courses around the area that compete with, with the Cordova Golf Course. And Cordova is very unique compared to that. Also, I saw some figures up there about revenue for the last three years. Now, they don't recollect what I recall jiving with our point of sale system out at the golf course. You might want to look that and research that a little bit. So I don't know, uh, here we are talking about closing a golf course. All three options are to close the golf course. Some temporary, which will never open from a temporary closure. So we knew that Jim Marta was retiring June thirtieth of this year, about a year and a half ago. But your staff has done nothing to transition someone into that role to manage that. So I don't know, and you'll find out why my name is Blunt, is I don't know if, if that's incompetence or that is an agenda that's being presented forward. Because closure, closure, closure are the three options that are out there. Thank you for your time.
Next, can I have Arnold Billings lead to the podium, please?
Good evening, everybody, ladies and gentlemen, and all the members of the golfing community. There are a lot of activities that people play today in recreational activities and that's your mandate, but not many of them have passion like this. Not many of them evoke, this is a lifestyle, it brings happiness to me. It creates integrity for the kids. It creates dignity for your kids. It creates accountability to having golf in your community. And the respect that the kids learn through golf is an immense value. It's priceless. I'm a member of the PGA of America for almost fifty years. And I can stand in front of you and share with all of you. We don't want another golf course closed in Sacramento or any place, period. Now, may I please ask Mr. Larkin to put up your pros and cons up there for a second? Just use option one would be great, if you don't mind. Yes, please, option one, doesn't matter, pros and cons. So I've been in business running golf courses for fifty years. If I had a group of my managers come to me and go option cons and pros and option one, you know what's admitted here, right? And some of you pointed out, there's no other viable options. For example, I don't see anything in option one that says, who might else want to contribute to the golf course to raise money here to offset our losses? We have partnerships in this area, we have businesses. You have the lady that represented Center Health, I thought that was a great analogy. You don't close the hospital because you need funds. You find resources and go out and get them, Pat. That's what you got to do. You know, you have fundraiser abilities. The Chamber of Commerce here doesn't hardly even know who we are at the Rancho Cordova Golf Course. And of course, many people here have said, you don't use any of the PAM, right? Promotion, advertising, marketing. Come on, when you have parks and recreation activities, you put a brochure out. There's not much to be said about Rancho Cordova Golf Course. With, with the fact that if you play baseball or swim, it's hard to win integrity, respect, dignity with your kids. But women, the growest, fastest growing population of golfers in America, there's opportunities here for businesswomen that work at all of the large companies and small companies in the area. So as a business decision, I understand, I do, I know how to read a P and L.
I'm sorry, sir, your time has expired.
Okay. Would that be okay?
Yes.
So you have companies that offer health and welfare programs, right? With all their companies. Have you attended, has anybody tried to get their companies to include golf in their health and welfare and create a partnership with Rancho Cordova Golf Course? Now, look, as a member of the PGA, Matt, we can work with you if you want us to. I would propose a task force assembled and created by the greatest golf professionals in this area. Okay? Kenny Morton, we have our executive director that Matt would, he would love to be involved, the president of the PGA. And we will form a task force to help you create a contract proposal if you don't want the golf course to operate it anymore. Because the RFP you put out had no sense for people. No good business person's not going to do that. They can't make money. But the PGA knows how to help craft that. We do it all over this country. So my suggestion is you create an interim package, funding package for a minimum of six months from June thirtieth till December thirty-first. And you allow us to put the PGA together. We'll bring a task force together and meet with this board and come up with viable alternatives and ideas to how you generate money here and get revitalization of players here. Because I want women to join your women's club. I want men to join your men's club. And I want seniors to have a place to join and play golf. And lastly, and most of all, we've got to have kids involved in golf. And this is the greatest spot to do it. So all we lack is creative thinking. That's it. So option one. So, option one, if, if it were me, I would've put, "Here are some creative ways to reach the optimum results we want," but there isn't anything in there. And lastly, if in fact there's 44 golf courses within that, I'm, I'm gonna buy in on your number. This five-county region has one and a half million people. 10% of the United States population play golf today. Anyway, I count that, that's 150,000 active golfers, by NGF, that's one round of golf per month. Well, that's over 700,000 golfers, golfers, that don't even know about Rancho Cordova Golf Course because there's no advertising, marketing, or promotion. So that's where I'd like to leave it with you, I would like to offer the PGA's assistance in this, so that we can help create the best win-win opportunity for the district and all the residents within Sacramento County. Thank you very much for your time.
I'd like to call Bob Warren to the podium, please.
How do we follow that? Just get ready to rumble.
Let's get ready to rumble. All right, um, I think everybody knows my name is Bob Warren, I was, spoke to you guys at the previous meeting. Uh, I've been part of Cordova now for over 10 years. Um, I want the board to understand some facts that really need attention. Uh, Cordova Golf has a wonderful history in Sacramento golf community. We've got Kevin and David Sutherland, these are professional golfers that learned, their dad brought them to Cordova to start their careers. Jack Rovain is another, you know, former PGA member. Cordova is, has gone through its cow pasture parts, its weed parts. Uh, VJ has done a wonderful job in getting the course into what I call excellent condition. Granted, we've had a hell of a lot of rain this year. Rain grows grass, we can't get in and mow it with the equipment we've got, and, you know, those are the, the things that are not controllable. Yet, over 300 people, we've heard from a lot of them, the different clubs that play out there every single day of the week, Monday through Sunday, we have leagues, tournaments, every single day, starting at 8 o'clock, different events. That's a core group. We have, uh, the county league that has been out there for 30 years, Aeroljet, which is, we all know, a major supporter of Rancho Cordova. You've got Rosemont, you've got Cordova, and you've got Capital Christian High School, that's their home course, where do they play. Um, you know, the golf course is viable, we should not even be discussing closing, we should be discussing how to keep it going, how to generate more, and that's what we want to do. We don't wanna take the easy way out. I mean, everything that has been put up there has been closed. You know, we talked about a million four that we need to, to get the golf course up and running. We need about $225,000, that's for the carts, a mower, and a guy to mow, you know, the staff. We don't need all this other stuff immediately. What Arnie's talking about, we can grow it from there. We're not talking about needing that type of a range. You know, shame on the financial person for telling us we were gonna get carts for two years, and we haven't got them yet. Shame on the board, you guys haven't even been out to the course until two weeks ago. That's, that's unheard of, you know, there's, we haven't seen you. You don't know us, we don't know you. Shame on the general manager for not providing those key words, leadership, advertising, what was it, PMA, whatever it is.
I'm sorry, sir, your time has expired.
No advertising, guys. This is the Elk Grove District, full pages.
All right, thank you, sir, your time has expired.
Yours is one little square. Step up to the floor.
I'd like to call Matt Davidson to the podium, please.
Hi, I'm gonna be speaking on behalf, behalf of Jack Rovain, who couldn't make it today for family reasons. My name is Jack Rovain, and I have been a PGA class and professional for over 20 years. I have been a touring and teaching professional for over 28 years, and am, and am the Rosemont High School golf, uh, coach for both boys and girls. I started playing golf at Cordova at 11 years old with my dad, and I golfed at Cordova for four years in high school. I worked at Cordova for two years while in college, and now come full circle. I've been volunteering as a junior golf instructor at Cordova for the past six years, and with my daughter, and the first tee program for three. My boys and girls golf team play at Cordova in the spring and fall. Other high school teams like that make, um, that make their home Cordova Golf Course is Hiram Johnson, Cordova High School, West Campus, and Capital Christian. With that being said, all five schools have matches weekly that accumulate to about 130 golfers a week, all, um, high schoolers, not including daily practices and range and course play. We at Rosemont High, um, School give $1,000 annually. Our junior program, with my staff and daughter, have it every Saturday from 9:30 to 11:00, and been doing this for over six years. We have over 250 participants in our program, overall, overall in those six years. Cordova Golf Course is also enrolled in the first tee program for the last three years as we have 1,600 participants. I have five children that have played and helped the junior program as well, as well. In closing, Cordova and Jim Marta have been very instrumental to me and my career, and to the love of the game. I love volunteering and giving back to the sport and the course I grew up on, Cordova Golf Course. Please recognize that your decision today is more than just a monetary act, transaction. Cordova Golf Course is a piece of history for many of us here tonight, and we hope to keep the tradition going for our future generations. Now with that said, my name's Matt Davidson, um, I was born and raised in Rancho Cordova. Um, I've been, my family's been having golf tournaments there annually, and this is actually the first year that I'm starting my own. So I've got eight foursomes going, and we've got probably 60 people coming over for a barbecue. Cordova's been a part of my life, I mean, I've been golfed there, I still golf there. Um, like I said, I went to Cordova Mills, um, Cordova High School, Sac State, got an engineering degree, and moved back home. I feel like it's decisions like this that my generation, the generation that bring big income into this, into the city like Rancho, it's a decision like this that's pushing me out. I can live anywhere I want, I choose to be here because of things like this. It's that community that Cordova brings. So, that's all I've got, I appreciate your time.
I'd like to call Peggy to the podium, please.
Peggy Mojer. Hi, I learned to golf at Cordova 20 years ago, Jim Marta was my teacher. I have, I'm a former employee of the golf course, set up your, the golf course website from scratch, uh, installed your POS system and managed it, and I have years of experience managing other golf courses. I just wanna finish what Bob started to say before his ti- time ran out. He had here the, uh, Cordova Parks and Recreation District magazine, which has a blurb about this big and the golf course, that's all that's in there. And then you look at the, is it Elk Grove? And it's two pages. The difference between promotion and never heard of you.
And the last speaker card that I have is Jacob Marta.
Hello. Hey, guys, how's it going? Thank you, guys, all for coming out. Um, my name's Jacob Marta, uh, my dad is Jim Marta, I've, obviously, I grew up at the golf course, there's a lot of sentimental reasons for, reasons I wanna keep the golf course open, but I wanna also, um, more importantly, there's, uh, you know, I have a passion that my dad instilled in me to grow the game of golf. Um, so I wanna, um, address the issue of, you know, how you guys view the golf industry going downhill. Um, that's sort of a doom and gloom thing that has been going around for a while, but, um, I wanted to shed a little bit of light on what, in my experience, uh, and what's happening, uh, right now. Like, right now, the, what's the, the shift that is happening? There is a shift that's happening in the golf industry right now that not many people are aware of. I'm the Director of Instruction at Topgolf, and so I get an opportunity to see a lot of, uh, brand-new golfers enjoying, enjoying the game of golf. And, um, it is a joy for me because that's, I get to grow the game of golf that way. Now, one of the interesting things, uh, that happens is that these people wanna play golf all of a sudden, they need a place to play. And, um, that is, the conversations are happening at homes in Anatolia and Elk Grove, because people drive out over there to, 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 to play. And they wanna have, they, they, they say, "I wanna go play some golf, where can we go?" They wanna go all the way out there. You know, "Let's go to Cordova." You know, and now, instead of trying to drag somebody out to play Cordova, like, "Oh, I don't know if I wanna go play, hit golf ball," these people have golf experience now. There's a lot of people that have golf experience now, under their belts, that now that conversation of saying, "Hey, let's go out and play, hit some balls at Cordova." "Okay, let's go, I can do that." Those conversations are happening right now, and then, as this, as, uh, venues like Topgolf, there's another one that's gonna open up, uh, Drive Shack, um, in Sacramento as well. These opportunities for people to actually play the game of golf and learn it are going to make that transition to a golf course a whole lot easier. And it's starting to happen, I'm seeing it happen at, up in the Roseville area, and it, it will trickle on down, I promise you it will, because these guys are, are passionate about playing the game now, they're excited to play, they wanna go, they wanna take it to the next, next level. And I, I wanted, so that was one point I wanted to bring up, and, um, and, so, so they need a place to play. Now, one of the interesting things that just happened recently is the PGA has started a program, it's called Diversity and Inclusion, and they're going around trying to, uh, re- get all these golf, head golf professionals, all these golf operators, to do something about the golf industry, instead of just waiting around for it to happen. They are talking about drastic changes in how to increase, um, the accessibility of golf to the golfing world that wants to golf, and, uh, making it more inclusive for women, um, making it more inviting to bring people out there, um, uh, to families and, and friends, and, and they're talking about shortening their golf courses. They are talking, they, they need golf courses that are shorter, in fact, quicker rounds, more value, and way more friendlier. And, I don't know if you've noticed, but Cordova Golf Course has an incredible amount of diversity already built in it. It has been talked about how quick a rounds these guys are able to play. You know, it's a very small footprint, people can go in and out and play that golf course- I'm sorry, Mr. Marta, your time- And be in and out however they want. So, my recommendation is, you know, let's give it a chance, you guys are on a, on a gold mine here, you guys don't know it. Uh, don't, don't miss this opportunity to, um, to take advantage of this opportunity, you know, you guys have a legacy that you guys can believe as well. You know, this is a chance to really grow and be a part of something, especially, you know, golf, I mean, everybody can play golf, anybody can do it. So, please, do what you guys can to keep this place open, it'll mean a lot to everyone.
Danielle, will you allow me one minute?
Patrick? You, you, you allowed your time to be, thank you.
You can have mine, people. Came here and they had-
Well, we-
I'm not gonna fight the brown hat, I understand.
So. We're gonna move on to comments by the board. Director Reyes?
It sounds like we do have a lot of passion here, it's not like we wanna close the golf course for closing it. We need to find the money, okay? Um, I, yeah, I haven't gone around golf courses, but I saw, uh, the last time we went, I'm, I'm really concerned. Uh, I don't know, have you guys gone in the back room? Have you seen the courtyard? I'm concerned about it.
They don't play the courtyard.
Yes, I know they don't play the courtyard, but they should know the state of it, so when you say, "Why, why are you talking about a lot of money?" I mean, if you look at the state of the courtyard, it is really not where we should be having our employees there. Let me tell you something, excuse me, but let's get a little respect here, we're in the boardroom, we have a, a, uh, board chair here, we are in our discussion, so would you kindly hold your talk? You can talk about it, we listen to you very nicely. I would like to know how we can save it, okay? But I would like to also know that, that there is more that needs to be done, okay? Uh, the flooding, I mean, let's decide on whether and how we can do it, okay? Or let's discuss. So my whole portion here is, I am saying, it is warranted. You know, we do definitely have a lot of people here, uh, who have been in the golf course, and, I, like I said, help, uh, find the money, it's not, you know, it's, it's partnerships you said, it's PGA, it's all this, and, and I would say that maybe, uh, you know, there might be a little need for a little time for partnerships to be, uh, explored, uh, PGA to come and see and explore it. The only challenge we have is, um, you know, we, we need to have some money to keep it
The way I feel about it is that closing the golf course is precipitous at this time. I think that we need more time to understand what the revenues would be like under a different management, um, structure, um, which would have to move forward since Mr. Marta is retiring. Uh, I also think that we do not, I'm sorry, we do not need to fix everything in the next year or two. I think we could slow it down and get, have an opportunity to see what a restructure might do for the golf course. So I don't actually like either of, or none of the three options presented at this time, maybe option two, to infuse some upfront cash, because there are some immediate needs there, and then time to let that work and see how it goes forward. Um, I'm not experienced enough with the management of golf courses to know whether or not a short-term, uh, closure is really fatal to a golf course, so I, um, uh, you know, I'm not sure about that, um, because I know there are immediate needs out there that, that have to, uh, be fixed. Um, so, option one, two, three, for me, I wouldn't vote for any of them at this time.
Secretary Sloan?
First of all, I wanna thank everybody that come out here that, tonight, this is a very important topic we're talking about here. I wanted to say that I totally agree, 99% of everything that was spoken tonight by you, the constituents that we work for as your board members. The one part, the 1% I don't agree is, is we do not, someone mentioned that we, why we wanna close it, we do not wanna close this course, it's not on our agenda, it never was, and I don't know how that ever leaked out that it was, and I, if it did, I apologize for that, uh, miscommunication. The course has been neglected for years. When I first moved, uh, I bought my house in 198, 1986, I played Cordova then, and because it was right down the street, I lived right down Bradshaw, and I, I thought it was a great course. I played a lot of the bigger, larger courses, in fact, just last week I played Empire Ranch. I tell you, I didn't play Empire Ranch, that, that course played me. You got people behind you. You got people behind you. I just want to go, they're angry. Actually, I'm in a, I'm a sand trap trying to negotiate my, how to get out of that, which, you know, is not an easy thing to do. And all of a sudden, a ball lands by my feet. Because the guy behind us is, you know, pissed off that we're not playing fast enough. Cordova is your happy place. That's what I heard here tonight. It's your friendly course. And these, that's an important thing to have for all ages. And if we were to lose that, you know, you can't, you can't, you can't buy that, the gentleman said. It brought tears in my eyes. The Korean gentleman talking about his, his family and how you have this place you can go and just, it's like your happy place. And I mean, that could be our tagline. I don't know if McDonald's uses it or whatever, but someone, we need to have this, the friendly course, friendliest course on earth. They have that one too? Ah. But I, I know that, I know that, I totally agree. We're not, I don't agree to closing the course. You know, why close a course? We need to fix it up. You fix a part of it and, and you do it in the offseason or whatever and, but we have been fixing that course up. And we've had a rough, a rough winter, totally rough winter. And, but so is all the other courses in the, in the county. And, and our course is still looking pretty nice. I mean, I must say, I, I mean, I'm going to go out there on Friday again. I'm going to get my, my son to go back out there. It's a matter of, these things like this wake people up. And so, you know, sometimes you take things for granted. And now you realize, we do have a real, tons of potential out there. I've heard lots of ideas, you know, getting sponsorships for each tee. Could have a different business sponsor. We could, we could have, you know, more of the youth and senior tournaments, fundraisers, all sorts of things that could go on out there. This is, this, this, this issue is not going to be solved tonight. But I know one thing, I agree with Director Lineback. I wasn't happy with, with all, with any of the three. Maybe one and two, if you combined them, because on one, we didn't say, there's no closure mentioned on one. I didn't see it, I didn't see it on pros and cons.
Yeah, it was temporary. Yeah, there was.
I didn't see it. I looked, I looked hard. Are you sure?
Might be time for a test.
Okay. Well, I don't agree with closing the course. I just, and I'm, I've listened. I want you to know that you've been heard. Thank you.
Vice Chair Danzel.
Thank you, Chair Yewen. First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Marta for his 38-plus year or so. Of service. Um...
Give him some more of that, man.
I'd like to address some of the questions that were asked of us. One question is, how many emails did we receive? I don't have that many fingers and toes and my, probably around my handicap, way up there in the hundreds. Not, 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 I've read all except, I think, the last 18 that Ms. Jones sent me at 5:30 tonight, pretty much saying, saying the same thing about a closure. And I don't, like, Secretary Sloan said, I don't know where the word "closure" came up. It was, "What do we do with the golf course?" Last month. There are some things we need to look at. On the talk of publicizing the course, knowing what's going on, the number one, number one key I looked at is, I remember, remember that golf's out there is there is the number one key to publicizing that course. Because a lot of people hear that course, is it had its bad years. Correct, Jim? It had bad years and people walked away from that course. And some of that stigma has never gone away. And the only people that can, we can put the most beautiful pictures of that course out there in the world. We can make it look, we can take one screenshot and make it look like Augusta. But guess what? That's not going to drive people there. It's going to be the people who play that course, in my opinion personally, that are going to do that for, for that course. I am a golfer. I have coached high school golf out on that course. Jim is, Jim and I had many conversations. So it's a course I know well. That's why I learned how to play golf. That was a very interesting being left-handed, playing with the only clubs I had right-handed. But, you know, hey, I figured it out. I'm still a horrible golfer. But, you know, I do agree. It is, it is a course you could play in a short amount of time. My wife still thinks three and a half hours is a little long for golf, but, you know, hey. Seeing the options, wasn't, wasn't real happy with them. Number three was off the table, second one for me. The second I opened this, it was not even a thought. It has been a very difficult decision, looking at these things. This course, as of April 2nd this year, has been closed for 45 days, I believe, or April 4th. I don't like the temporary closure, but we know golf, we've proven, if we close it for time being, people will come back. Every one of you is here. I don't want to see it closed for, personally, more than 15 to 20 days, but that, if, if we have to do that. But I don't know what that's going to take to get, get us where we are. I agree that we need to look at what it's going to cost us truly to get, get things where we're, where we're going. Like Director Lineback said, not everything at once, like some of the members of the public. So that's where I stand right now. I'm still undecided, so. But three is definitely off the table for me, folks.
Do you want to say something else? Go ahead, Secretary Sloan.
I have one more I forgot to mention. Mr. Dugan mentioned the, the potential of the new communities, new homing, housing developments that's going in there. With, with each house that goes, person, people move into this area, a big selling point, point would be that there's a golf course, you know, five minutes away. And that's, that's untapped resources right there. And I don't know how many homes that there actually are slated for that area, but that's a lot of new customers right there. And I think, you know, the grandparents and grandkid idea is a real big thing. And I wish, I wish we had some of the kids in here get up to speak who like to, you know, play golf. Because that's the, that's the generation we got to focus on. Because you know, as a baby boomer, we're only going to go so far. We need our little kids to be following us in the footsteps and to love that course too. So, that's it.
I'd like to echo the Vice Chair. I do appreciate everyone coming out tonight, sharing your opinions. Appreciate Jim's long time out there working at the course. You know, thank you, Clerk Jones, for every day sending us your emails. That's, I mean, to read those, I mean, some of them were short, you know, saved the golf course, but some of you shared your stories, your, your history there, you know, you, you going there, taking your children there, taking your grandchildren there. Very, very, it was hard to read those and think, well, do we potentially have to end this facility's run? I will echo some of the things that Director Reyes said. There are some things that have to be done out there that are outside of the world of the golf course itself. So we do have to look at those in the near future. The corporate yard where VJ and his crew work is in dire need of some updating. It's not something I think we can delay years down the road. We'd have to look at a way to, to finance that and get that into an acceptable condition. And there's also some other areas that need to be addressed. I am intrigued by the, I don't recall the gentleman's name, but the PGA who talked about some potential, you know, possible some partnerships with them and working with them, you know, over the next, the next six months. That is something I'd be very, very favorable for if we could look into something like that. You know, we never, never wanted to close the golf course, but we have to sometimes look at things and be realistic with it and say, what is it going to take to keep this facility open? And how can we do it and still support the rest of the district? So it's tough. But there was never any mindset that, oh, we need to close this facility. I mean, that is one of the options that was presented. So, I don't, this is a tough one. I have to admit, I've sat at home thinking about it, driving places, thinking about it. I'm not a golfer, but I, you know, my dad thought that too. It was something I'd always intended on taking up with him before he passed away, but, you know, time moves on. But I will, I'll look into it. I promise you that. But I do drive by the course quite often because my mother lives in Rosemont, so does my sister. I've been out there a few times over the years. You know, the course, when we were out there visiting it just last week, it's, I was just shocked, I was just, it looked so fabulous. I mean, Jim saw me, I was taking all kinds of pictures of it. It was, it was gorgeous out there. So, there's some rough edges, of course, so, so there definitely needs to be some, you know, work done out there. But I would agree, I, I'm not in favor of closing it. Option three is off the table for me as well. As for one or two, I, I, like you said, I'm intrigued with the, the partnership possibility, if that's something, I don't know how quickly we could get something like that rolling. So, with that being said, oh, yes.
Chair Yewen, one of the things I wanted to, to clarify, FYI, it is not the city of Rancho Cordova. I want to make this clear to you. The, our golf course is with the county, all right? So that's our focus. I mean, we're trying to work with the county. It is not a city. So it's kind of like, I don't know. I've said, why doesn't, why doesn't the community council, you know, the Cordova Community Council, why don't they have their tournaments? I see they have tournaments. Why don't they have it at our course? How come they've never had it there?
They need, and they, they also need a clubhouse.
Yeah, you need a clubhouse. So that's another thing that we're trying to look at.
There's amenities that don't exist there for that.
Yeah. Amenities that don't look right. So anyway, but if I can just complete this, I want you to know, it is not the city of Rancho Cordova. So don't worry about going to them. It is, our golf course is with the county of Sacramento. And Arnie, PGA, if they can, I mean, bring in some money. I don't know what it is. I don't know whether memberships, I don't know what. But obviously, it, we can't raise the, the fees high enough to be able to bring in all the monies we need. We're not supposed to. We don't want to. We want to keep it where it is, okay? But we've got to make some decisions. And I think creativity might be needed.
Secretary Sloan.
Yeah, I, I think that was a poor excuse to say that we don't have a, we couldn't hold a tournament out there. Because I've been to numerous tournaments where they construct a tent and put tables up and stages and podiums. And you could have a tournament out there, a constructed tent and, and whatever, you know, there's plenty of space out there. So, I don't want to say that. And I have heard that. I've heard the, the guy who runs the, the restaurant, if he wished he had an area where there's outdoor barbecuing and, and more seating and people could sit out there and have a nice little place where they can watch the putters on the putting green. I mean, there's things that we can do and, and we're just not doing it. So, thanks.
Director Lineback.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to piggyback on Director Reyes, you know, to be very clear. It's the Cordova Recreation and Park District. The golf course itself is located in the county. It's in the community of Rosemont. So we can't look necessarily, the city is unlikely to support it because it is not in the city, technically speaking. So it is in the county and it is owned and operated by this park district.
Secretary Sloan.
But they will support the high school and the golf team at the high school. So that's on their approach, too.
Okay. All right. Anyone else? Did you have anything to make a motion? All right. Does anyone care to make a motion?
Well, I guess, at this time, I would like to make a motion that we direct staff to explore creative partnerships or, or other ways to work with, with the PGA, to work with the community. I don't know how we're going to be able to do that, but I would think that's, I mean, we're not, I'm, we're not going to support any of the options, so how should we do that?
Do we make a modestly motion?
Should we just say, "No motion," or...
You can bring your own motion.
Or maybe no motion, but a little bit of staff direction?
Yeah.
That'd be nice.
That's true. Okay.
All right. So, no motions? So staff direction would be to...
Explore other ways of making the golf course viable.
All right. Is that, are we making a motion or are we? Staff, staff direction, okay.
I think it's direction, Arnie.
Is it possible to form like a, a steering committee for the golf course?
I think that would kind of be, I think that would kind of be what we do with Arnie.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I'd like to see some, you know, representatives from the course out there to form a little committee.
They can see...
Because we really, we should have had these outreach, you know, community meetings before this day, where we actually talked about what we need to do and there are different directions to go into.
All right.
Not ad hoc, but I think, a lot of those homeowners associations put up these steering committees. So why can't the golf course have its own steering?
Secretary Sloan, that will potentially be part of what our discussions with the stakeholders are. So, all right, so...
I just want to confirm the record. There's no motion, so no action taken, and staff is directed to find other ways. Can you articulate, find other ways?
Well, it sounds like...
And, and to look into possible partnerships? Or what? I don't know.
Oh, okay. And while I'm directing, I would think we would direct staff to reach out to stakeholders.
And keeping closure off the table. That's what I, that's what I mean.
Did you get that? So that's the direction? No action taken?
That's exactly what I was just going to say. We're going to go ahead and take a, a break here at 8:34 of 10 minutes, so people can use the restrooms and all those good things.